Welcome. Let me call the Richland County Council Special Call Meeting for December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one to order. I'll ask is only to call the roll for attendance.
Malinowski.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Tratio. Joe Walker.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Overture Walker.
Present.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The next item on your agenda is the invocation followed by the pledge allegiance. That's going to be done by the Honorable Derek Pew. Mr. Pew, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask everybody to bow their heads with him, please. God, we'd like to thank you for this opportunity for us to symbol together, to symbol together as a body to conduct the people's business. We ask that you blessed the hands that prepared this meeting, and we ask all these things through your son, Christ Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pew. That brings item four on your agenda, which is approval of minutes. Chair intended most of the approval of minutes for December seventh.
Moved to approve.
It's moved by Mrs. Baron, second by Walker.
Mr. Chair. So I have just one, um, thank you, just one edit that I wanted to make note of in the minutes. For items eighteen, A, B, and C, I did submit ahead of time to that I recuse myself from those votes due to my parent company representing the organizations mentioned in each of those items. Thank you.
That brings us to item five on your.
Oh.
I'm sorry, go ahead and call the roll for the vote. Thank you.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that brings us to item five on your agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. I have a few items before we move forward as it relates to the agenda. The first one, and these will be additions. First one is we need to add to our executive, well, under the attorney's report and update reference the opioid litigation.
What litigation?
Opioid. That would be under the. Opiate. That would be under the attorney's report.
Mr. Chair.
Executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Pardon me, did you say opioid?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then following, and also around the presentation proclamation, which would be placed right after the adoption of the agenda. Or on the Swarthawk Committee. And that report would include, if I remember correctly, of the change order and also resuming connections regarding non-payment. Those, and I'll place those, that would be item eighteen, right after the. Report of the Strategic Planning Committee. And we'll move out other items to nineteen. That's about it in those items. How many is any staff has?
No, Mr. Chair, no requests for changes.
And most of adoption of the agenda is amended with those items.
Second Baron.
Baron, Baron second by.
Moved by Mackey.
By Mackey, second by Baron. In further discussion, there'll be nine. Ms. Hahn can call the roll for the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Malinowski. Pew. McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio. Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that brings for the next item on your agenda, which is a proclamation that was added to your agenda. I think Mr. Walker and Ms. English, I think, has that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Paul Walker.
And the fact that it looks like Coach Davis is walking in. So not calling y'all, Coach Davis. Coach Davis, will you come down to the. Odie in there? This is a proclamation recognizing the Hopkins Middle School football team on their twenty twenty-one championship. This one is a little personal for me because, you know, I attended Hopkins Middle School and, you know, although I represent District Eight, which is in Northeast Columbia, but I am, I am still a Hopkins Eagle at heart and have a lot of ties to, to that community. You know, Coach Davis and I, we, we go way back. We've known each other, you know, since, since middle school, actually Hopkins Middle School days, and I will share a secret with your team about you, and that is Coach Davis is a much better coach than he is, you know, a tackler or than he is a blocker. But he had the same level of intensity, and obviously that has carried over into coaching, and you see the results. But in any event, whereas participation in organized athletics helps build character, teaches the importance of working together, emphasizes that achievement requires not only ability but hard work, good sportsmanship and fair play, whereas a stolen example of the aforementioned attributes has been the achievement of the twenty twenty-one Hopkins Middle School football team, which captured the Richland School District One Division Two District Championship on November third, twenty twenty-one, after posting a four and two record overall while going undefeated in their division for the past two years. And whereas amidst the challenges of playing during a pandemic, the team truly demonstrated poise, sportsmanship, and teamwork throughout the incredible championship season. And whereas head coach Mark Davis and his coaching staff have led the student athletes of Hopkins Middle School to the aforementioned achievements while maintaining an emphasis on academic excellence and exemplary personal conduct, and whereas special commendation is due to the entire team, the assistant coaches, the athletic director, the Hopkins Middle School principal, Dr. Alexandria Williams, to the Lord Richland Community Head Football Director Merlin Taylor, and to the Hopkins Middle School faculty, students, and to all those who offer their support, and especially to the parents and families. Now therefore be it proclaimed that council members Cheryl English and Overture Walker recognize the Hopkins Middle School Eagles in the championship football season. We hereby extend this expression of our pride in your accomplishments and our appreciation for the honor and prestige you have brought to our community by exceptional display of sportsmanship, motivation, and inspired team play. You are indeed the champions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. To the, the county council, Councilman Walker, Councilwoman English, on behalf of Hopkins Middle School and the community, we truly do thank you for this prestigious award and proclamation. I couldn't have done it without these young men and women that I have here. Yes, we did have a young lady that played, and she started that right tackle. Oh, during this, with the season, it was very challenging and also rewarding, special season dealing with COVID. I had a few players that came down with it. Thanks be to God that it wasn't serious, but, you know, they, they, they fought through it. They came back. And, and we, we had some students that were dealing with emotional and other issues that, you know, some of us as adults don't deal with, but they fought through it, they battled through it, even had some academic issues. And, and I challenged my kids because like I tell them, you know, football is, is here and there, but academics is lifetime. And if you can't, if you don't have the academics, you can't play for me. I love you just like my child, but once you get that done, then you can come and play for me. And I had thirteen of them that got dismissed, but they came back because I wanted to see where your heart is. Is it just to play? Or is it looking at longevity? And by them doing that and with our great principle with the vision that she came in with last year, I wanted to make sure that vision was carried out with our team. And I, I love these. I, like I told my two sons, you know, you got thirty-three other brothers and sisters now, so I'm gonna follow them all the way until they succeed as an adult, as an adult. But to, not gonna be up here alone because I don't feel like I'm a Baptist preacher. But I just, we want to present these plaques to Councilwoman Cheryl English.
Thank you.
It states that. Hopkins Middle School, Richland One Division Two Champions, twenty twenty-one. And also. There's no need, if we got rings, y'all need rings. To Councilman Walker. You know, we never won a championship when we was in school. You know, he, I came out in one play, he ran all the way back to the school, he never played ball again. With that being said, to you, Hopkins Middle School, Richland, Richland One Division Two Champions, twenty twenty-one. And also. Even though you didn't get a basketball championship, neither football, now you have one. And to the county council, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
And we also have copies of the proclamation, and each one of the names is on it, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so very, very much. I'm happy, Count. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
That brings us to item six on your agenda. Which is reported attorney for executive session. As you may recall, I had opioid litigation item on the agenda. Mr. Wright, you recognize.
Yes, that's the only item I have for my report is the opioid litigation update.
That's an executive session item?
Yes, sir.
That brings to item seven on your agenda, and we'll give them an opportunity. Hello, welcome back.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Recognize me.
Thank you. Since we just acknowledged items that were for executive session, do we also want to note item eleven A?
Yes.
Thank y'all again.
Welcome, Mr. That brings us to item seven on your agenda, which is citizen's input for items on the agenda and not requiring a public hearing. Ms. McBride, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, sir. We have two.
Not open?
We have two people that signed up. When you have your name, please come down and repeat your full name. The first person is Mr. Lamont Christian. All right, sir. Would you please repeat your name and give your address?
Lamont Christian, two two four Seabiscuit Lane, Elgin, South Carolina. I'm here tonight to speak to you, and I appreciate this opportunity in reference to a program that's right here in our backyard in Blythewood. And this program is called the Warrior Path Program. It's a program that talks about a conversation that we've had many, many times over and over, and that's about post-traumatic stress. But what this program actually does is redefine our focus on post-traumatic stress and talks about post-traumatic growth, which is at the opposite end of that spectrum, and talks about how veterans and first responders, who I refer to as defenders, defenders of our community and our nation, and giving them the opportunity to actually live the life that they deserve and one that they thrive, and not one that the media and many medical professionals will label them with by saying that they have to live a diminished version of their life. I focus specifically on defenders, and that is veterans, combat veterans, and first responders of our community. As we've already talked about the pandemic and the effects that it has on our community and our society, these groups of people, our first responders, have been at the front line since day one, nonstop. And even though they take their uniforms off at night, they have to go back into that fray in the next day or night if they're running double shifts. Our program right here in South Carolina is one that gives us the opportunity to provide them the focus that they need. It's a breakthrough program, but more importantly, it's one of self-care. It's not at the bottom of a bottle, whether it's a pill bottle or an alcohol bottle, it's at the bottom of their own feet, and they can take these steps forward on their day-to-day progress in living the life that they deserve. Being able to speak to you about this tonight in front of this council is a privilege and an honor that I appreciate, not only because I served my country for thirty-two years as well as a military member, but because I continue to serve, and that's due to your support. Every day when somebody says, "Thank you for your service," I welcomely say to you, as I would say to them, "Thank you for your support." Thank you.
Next person is Sutton Shaw. Please come down. Repeat your name, give your address, and you have two minutes.
You may go ahead, though.
My name is Sutton Shaw, and I live at two one one five Mueller Road in Blythewood, South Carolina. And I'm sharing with you, this will be a grant that we will be submitting to support the very program that Lamont just spoke about, which is the Warrior Path Program. Warrior Path Program has been in existence since October of last year, and it is part of a bigger program that we have to help our veterans. The grant is under the Avalon Network, which is part of the Gary Sinise Network, the Avalon Network.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
I know what your point of order is gonna be, Ms. Malinowski, and I know it's reference item, not only, an item on the agenda.
It's not, it's not the presentation. I'm letting that one go. You're not supposed to request funds or any type of funding sponsorship during presentations, and it sounds like that's where you started with, with a grant.
I'm just letting you know, we're going to be submitting one, but I'm not requesting it tonight.
Thank you. You may proceed then.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anyhow, our, our efforts in next year will be to focus on our first responder community. This program is very unique in the sense that it is training and it is delivered, as you saw, by other veterans and first responders who have been through the program. I want to just invite you all out to see the Red Barn, and so we have many volunteer opportunities. I encourage all of you to come out. I think many of you have been out there, but I want to invite all of you out to see the work. But I want to invite all of you out to see the work we're doing, and I'm proud to say, right here in Richland County. This program only exists in nine other locations in the United States. And so we're fortunate that this program exists here and has the endorsement of, uh, Sheriff Lot and Will Grimsey, which I included those letters, and those have already been submitted to you, um, in a previous email, and so that's not why I'm here. I want to personally invite all of you out in twenty twenty-two to join us at the Big Red Barn Retreat and be a part of watching this program, um, being delivered right here in our backyard. So, thank you for listening to me tonight, I appreciate the honor, and, um, I look forward hopefully to seeing you out at the Big Red Barn Retreat in twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll knock your points, very well taken.
There are no one else signed up.
That brings the item H A, which is citizen input, uh, transportation risk kind of matters, not on the agenda, which is probably heard already.
There are no one signed up.
I think it's item nine on your agenda. Order the county administrator, uh, Mr. Brown, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, for this evening's meeting, I do not have a report for this evening's meeting, Mr. Chair.
That's, and that brings us to the, for the, uh, Deputy Clerk Council, Ms. Ollie.
Yes, sir, um, the only item I have is to let you know that P I O and the government and community service departments have started working on, um, public outreach for the redistricting. Uh, that was something that y'all asked for in the last meeting, uh, and they have begun that process. That's completes my report.
I think it's the item eleven, which is the report of the chair. I have two items, what I miss, the county administrator evaluation agreement, that is an executive session item. And then the item eleven B is redistricting. You may recall, um, at our last meeting, um, we did get a, a, a schedule from our attorney in terms of helping us to meet the deadline to get our, uh, redistricting plan passed in a timely fashion. And part of that was to move forward with, with reading, with a first reading, uh, on that, um, ordinance and, and mapping tonight. It's my understanding, I think everyone have met, um, with Ms. Etheridge to look at the various district lines and et cetera, recognizing that every district line for every individual may not be exactly at this time what to think it ought to be and should be, and, and that won't be the case for everybody at all. But it's my hope that we're at the point where we could at least move forward with, um, a first reading tonight based on what you've seen, referenced, um, your district, what you got from Ms. Etheridge, uh, with, and, and with, with any statement you want to make about any concern you have that you want to be able to address prior to second reading. So we can do that too, but we do need to, to, to continue the, the process. Mr. Wright, everything that, uh, and you want to restate the schedule that you presented to us in the last meeting?
Yes, sir. Tonight will be the first reading, uh, December fourteenth. The second reading will be January fourth. On January eighteenth, we have a public hearing, and February eighth will be the third and final reading. So the, the complete process should be done February eighth of twenty twenty-two.
Which will give us a lot of time along the way, since it'd be, it'd be February eighth before we get to the, to the final.
Thank you. Um, um, Ms., uh, or staff, is there a place where we can publish these dates, since I know that the public will be interested in following along the process pretty closely, what we expect to, to have?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Mr. Ray, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, you have to apologize for that.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Tracy, uh, the plan is to, uh, publicize, uh, once approved by council, the draft maps, as well as the timeline associated, uh, with the, the, from where we are now to the, to the conclusion of the approved, uh, final version of the maps. So we will do that in both, uh, print media, uh, as well as social media as well.
Okay, can I, uh, just a follow-up? And so when you reference the draft maps, is there a day that we expect? Or a general timeline that we expect the draft maps to be, um, publicized?
So once the council has, uh, deemed that they have viewed the maps and they are ready for us to publish those draft maps, then we will be ready to publish those draft maps. So we want the council to obviously review those first, give any comments, feedback, any changes, uh, prior to the drafts being submitted, before we publicize those draft maps.
But I have objection if it's, if, if we vote on first reading tonight for, for, for the public, you know? With, with the understanding that, um, there, there, there are opportunities for minor changes.
All right, I didn't remember.
Oh, tonight? At, um, at the reading?
I would prefer that we at least wait until, because there are a number of changes I'm sure that has to be made, rather than giving a false hope for, um, what's being presented tonight, to wait till at least after they.
Mr. Chair.
My conversation with colleagues, I, I haven't spoken to anybody who had any, any, any serious doubt about changes. So that's why I would suggest we try to move on, because that's what we have for the readings, Mr. Smalnass.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is the second time that we are hearing dates thrown out. But as, as Ms. Tracy was saying, we've got absolutely nothing written here. And I don't understand why, and now we're being told tonight's supposed to be a first reading, and other than under the chair's report, we don't have any information, there's not even a placeholder that we should be doing the first reading here on this. So like Ms. McBride is saying, seems to me we ought to be a little bit more professional in the way we're doing this, not just helter-skelter, okay, here's some more dates, and let's do a first reading tonight, and we'll catch up with the others later. As far as anybody having objection, I realize my district doesn't leave a lot of room to go one way or the other. But it was just this afternoon or shortly before noon that I'd spoke with Ms. Etheridge. So, uh, Derek Pugh, my neighbor in district two, he has no idea what the potential, uh, change is at this point. So he's not had the opportunity to look at that. So I'm like Ms. McBride, uh, I think we should put this off so that everybody has a chance to look at it, and the public knows exactly what we're doing when we're doing it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Just, just quickly, let me just, quick, just, Ms. Smalnass, Ms. Smalnass, these dates weren't just thrown out, these dates were given to us at our, at our last meeting.
That's what I'm saying, they were given to us at the last meeting, they're given to us again, and they're verbally, there's nothing written down, and I don't know why we're not having information written down, so there's a documented record of this, not just a recording somewhere.
I want to say that I did have a chance to look, but they have been changes made since the last time I had an opportunity to look, and I would like to see those changes beforehand.
I get a motion then for some suggested dates, so how you want to do this, since these won't work? So we can move on.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I can move ahead.
Well, if this is to be a first reading, we'd have to publish the maps tonight, because it's a first reading. Um, it's first reading, we have the draft ordinance, we have draft maps. We already know it's not going to be the final map, that's the whole point in having the first reading. And then there's a process of adjusting the maps and adjusting the numbers to fit, um, how they can fit. But there's a deadline, and you can't push it back. Uh, then February eighth is the final date, period. So the, tonight was scheduled to be the first reading, then we have to have the first reading. And the first reading, you can't have a reading and then don't publish what you're, you know, reading, basically. So you have to have, um, have to, to show the maps, basically, at this point. With the understanding that it's, we know it's not the final version.
Ask my colleagues a quick question. We're going to, um, meet on Thursday of this week, we have a scheduled meeting on Thursday. Ask for my colleagues to, to look at those maps well enough that we consider a first reading so we can move this process.
First read on Thursday. I haven't, I had, many changes have been made to my map.
Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we have a first reading of the redistricting ordinance along with published maps on this Thursday, December sixteenth.
Thank you. Make the motion, move it properly, second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
This new year, you recognize?
Thank you, and, and just as part of that, I've, of course, seen my map, but I haven't seen anybody else's. And of course, I defer to their knowledge of their areas, but we're going to be voting on those maps as a whole, so I would like to see everybody.
But make sure everybody have a complete, a map of their district and a complete map of the total county by Thursday.
Mr. Chair. Sorry, I just want to make sure we're clear. I've, I've seen my maps, but I also know this process, it is first reading, but the, the intent is to put it out there and get the public feedback. So the maps will change again if we hear feedback. So I, I, I think we all know it's gonna keep changing. Am I correct in that statement?
Mr. Chair. We're supposed to have input with the first map, and then some people did a map, had input, other people came back and gave input over that input, which has changed, so, uh, I think that the recommendation for the eighteenth is the best one, the sixteenth where everybody would have some input.
Further discussion? If not, Ms. Owen, can you call the role for the motion to defer this meeting until our meeting on the sixteenth?
Yes. Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tracyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you, that completes my report with the understanding that the, um, county administrator evaluation agreement is, is to be held in executive session. That brings item twelve on your agenda, which is open and closed public hearings. Um, item twelve A, authorized execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of abhorrent, um, taxes, tax agreement bound between Richland County, South Carolina, and Western House Electric Company, LLC, to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes and other related matters. Um, that public hearing is now open, did anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
That public hearing is now closed. That brings item twelve B, which is also a public hearing, which is authorized execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes and incentive agreement by, in between Richland County, South Carolina, and Pine Industrial, um, One LLC. That public hearing is now open, did anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir, no one signed up.
That public hearing is now closed. That, that now bring us to item thirteen on your agenda, which is third reading items. The first third reading item is item thirteen A, authorized execution and delivery of fee in lieu of abhorrent, uh, tax agreement bound between Richland County, South Carolina, Western House Electric Company, LLC, to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes and other related matters. And Chair, Chair, entertain the motion on item thirteen A. Motion for approval?
Second.
Moving properly, second, discussion. Yeah, Ms. Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A reminder about the impact of this item on, um, the opportunity for jobs and advancement in, um, it, in people who are working for Weston.
Mr. Robo, you on the line? And did you hear the question, just about the job that relates to, um, item thirteen A regarding Weston House?
Six dollars an hour for the, for the standard, uh, employee. There are opportunities for advancement, they do engineering, design, uh, a number of advanced processes. So, uh, it's one of our more vertically integrated companies in the county.
For the number of jobs?
For the number of jobs? They have more than nine hundred employees.
Wait a minute, Mr. Tracy.
Thank you, it's just any, are there any additional jobs, or are there just improvements on current jobs?
Get that question, Mr.?
No, ma'am, uh, it, it's just, uh, maintaining the current employment level. There, there are no new jobs associated with this, this capital investment that, that they're willing to, to commit to.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Owen, can you call the role for the motion? Owen, can you call the role for the motion for item thirteen A?
Malinowski. Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tracyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
Chair, I'd like to move for reconsideration.
Second.
Which for reconsideration, properly, second, item thirteen A. Um, Ms. Owen, can you call the role for the motion for reconsideration?
Malinowski. Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Tracyo.
No.
Joe Walker.
No.
Baron.
No.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton. Motion fails.
That brings to thirteen B, authorized execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes and incentive agreement by, in between Richland County, South Carolina, Pine Industrial LLC, to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other matters related. Chair, entertain the motion, reference item thirteen B. A move. Is removed?
Second.
And properly, second, discussion, reference item thirteen B. There being none, uh, Ms. Owen, can you call the role for, for, um, item thirteen B?
Malinowski. Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tracyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Chair, move for reconsideration.
Which reconsideration, item thirteen B is a second.
Second.
Moving properly, second, um, Ms. Owen, can you call the role for the motion for reconsideration for item thirteen B?
Malinowski.
No.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Tracyo.
No.
Joe Walker. Baron.
No.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
I'm going to sue, um, item fourteen-eight. Items. First one is, which is authorized and execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of, of abhorrent, uh, agreement bound between, you know, Richland County, South Carolina, and Project Wheat, to provide for payment of fee in lieu of taxes and other matters related. Chair, entertain the motion for that second reading item. A move. Is removed.
Second.
Properly, second, discussion. There being none, um, Ms. Owen, can you call the role for, for item fourteen A?
Malinowski. Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tracyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
I'm recusing myself, as previously stated.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
Thanks, I have fifteen on your, this is report of the Economic Development Committee. Of the, I'm sorry, Ms. McBride, you recognize?
Thank you, uh, the Economic Development Committee recommends that fifteen-eight be, is recommended approval for fifteen-eight, authorizing the sale of a certain real property owned by Richland County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto. This is a first reading item, and additional information can be found on pages one seventeen through one thirty-five.
This recommendation.
Approval.
But committee's recommendation, um, any discussion, Mr. Smalnass, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. By next reading, third at the latest, I would like to see some definition of the term effective date. The term effective date is mentioned throughout this particular document, but nowhere did I see where effective date is defined as to what it is. That's all, thank you.
So note, so note, any further discussion? If not, Ms. Owen, can you call the role, um, for the, for the committee's recommendation regarding fifteen A?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tracyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings item sixteen on your agenda, which is report of the Rules and Appartments Committee, that, you thought of Bill Malinowski.
Hey, Mr. Chair, we have two vacancies for the Richland Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees. After interviewing all of the applicants, the committee unanimously recommends to appoint Stacy Brennan and choose the second individual from the upcoming pool of candidates of five other individuals.
Call the roll for the committee's recommendation.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That completes my report, Mr. Chair.
I bring us to item seventeen on your agenda, that's a report of the Strategic Planning Ad Hoc Committee. Miss. Mackey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the Strategic Ad Hoc Committee met today and reviewed, um, the draft strategic plan report from our previously held strategic planning retreat on November, uh, fifteenth. The, the draft report laid out a draft vision and mission and seven strategic goals that council has been provided and welcomed feedback. This document will be used in our council retreat in January as our guide as we spend a full day focusing on our goals for the coming year and prioritizing them to develop our full final strategic plan. That is a report of the Strategic Planning Ad Hoc Committee, sir.
Do I actually require anything?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That brings, um, to item eighteen, I'm sorry, we added item eighteen and, and which is the S- or, uh, ad hoc committee. I want to say you.
Yes, yeah. Um, let's say there are two items from the Sura Ad Hoc Committee. One of them was staff recommended an approval for a, of a change order in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand dollars, five cents. The purpose is that it's to provide extra storage for the residential grinder pump that's going to be installed in the new sewer system in Lower Richland. That currently, the, the standard grinder pump system only holds one hundred ten gallons and the extra storage tank would be needed for increased capacity to hold more volume, volume in case of a pump malfunction or, or power failure in those remote locations. The extra storage tank will have enough wastewater to get the system back online and prevent possible sanitary sewer overflows in the individual grinder pump systems. And we don't need any additional sanitary sewer overflow, so based on all that information provided from our utilities director, Mr. Bill Davis, and the committee speaking with him and reviewing him, it's recommended that we approve this change order.
But committee's recommendation, reference the, um, change order, uh, discussion. There being none, I'll ask Mrs. Owen to call the roll for the motion.
Malinowski.
But committee's recommendation, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio. Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Yes. Motion passes.
The second and, the second and final item, uh, has, is relating to sewer disconnections for non-payment. They were suspended during the pandemic due to the pandemic. This has been a year later now. The county is in arrears over one million dollars because of, uh, not suspending, uh, sewer water service and not collecting fees, and so the committee agreed with a staff recommendation, which is to resume the policy for disconnections of water and sewer for non-compliant individuals.
But committee's recommendation, discussions. Is that for a specified period of time or do we know the cost?
No, sir, Mr. Chair. Back in May thirteen, twenty twenty, um, the governor, uh, re- I guess he took away the, the suspension that he had for, um, charging people for those services and, uh, he lifted it and communicated that utilities, uh, providers should continue to try to work with citizens, but that you could start back with these disconnects. Uh, Richland County did not do that. We continue to try to work with citizens up into, uh, even this very moment since we, since we're still doing that. Uh, and as a result of that, uh, we are, um, we have an enterprise system that we're not able to fully support utilizing the resources of that system because we're just basically giving services and not receiving payment in some instances. So the, the proper and the regular pattern would be to disconnect service, uh, until services are paid for and then reconnect once those services can be paid for. So we're simply asking to do what pretty much every standard utility provider, uh, is doing related to, uh, sewer and water services that are non-paid for.
Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown, you mentioned that you've been working with citizens, and so I guess I just wonder, apart from this, has the county worked to establish payment plans and, and those types of things, and if so, will, will those efforts continue? Not saying that that negates your ability to, to disconnect service, but just want to understand the kinds of, of help or that we're trying to provide there.
Yes, ma'am. So the, the county does, um, in, in, I use the term payment plans, yes, ma'am, we will not stop doing what we have always done. Uh, but we're talking about just literally non-payment for a utility service that is an enterprise fund. So we will continue those efforts. We're not saying we're not gonna try to work with people, but we are saying from a, a business standpoint with this system, there's a cost to receiving non-payments, and so we, we are bearing that cost right now at a, at a level that is not future sustainable for your utility system.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Actually, you recognize?
Thank you. Uh, were you able to assist citizens of Richland County through the emergency rental plan or, or emergency rental assistance program?
Yes, ma'am. Richland County citizens were entitled to those same programs, yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, and that applied to sewer?
That, that applied to all utilities, including sewer, yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Questions, I'll ask, Ms. Owen, go call the roll, um, for the committee's recommendation for item eighteen, which would be eighteen B.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Tratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That completes my report, Mr. Chair.
And my that brings us to item nineteen on your agenda, which was, which is actually other.
Mr. Chair, sorry, um, does item eighteen A need to be reconsidered?
As I was just going to do, I was just gonna answer, we reconsider both eighteen A and B.
Second?
Moving proper second for reconsideration, item eighteen A and B, um, Ms. Owen, can you call the roll for the motion?
Malinowski.
And if, I apologize, that was, who made the motion? I'm, I'm, I'm not doing a good job, kind of.
Malinowski.
Malinowski, second by you.
Second by.
Second by Newton.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Malinowski.
Oh.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Tratio.
No.
Joe Walker.
No.
Baron.
No.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
That brings us to other items, um, uh, which is nineteen on your agenda now, and that is, um, eighteen A and, and order establishing new electrical districts for the electric, election of members of Richland County pursuant to United States consensus, um, uh, twenty twenty in compliance with section four dash, uh, nine dash nine zero, um. That was more to do with the ordinance for redistricting, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I believe that.
So, so that would be moved with, um, the other, with the mapping for Thursday, correct?
That's correct, Chair.
Item, uh, of the, uh, nineteen B is, is, is another item as well. That's Department of Public Works Solid Waste Recycling Division Residential Curbside Collection Services Area Three Contract Award Recommendation. Mr. Brown, you recognize?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I believe this item was, uh, deferred from the last council meeting, um, and so this item is back before, uh, the council, I believe the council's previous, uh, action, or for the committee's previous action on this item was to deny staff request, and so this item is getting back before council for final consideration from the county council.
Motion, any conversation reference item, um, um, nineteen B.
Chair, have a motion.
Mr. Walker, over Walker, you recognize?
I would move that we, uh, move to accept the committee's, uh, recommendation to deny, uh, the contract award and authorize the administrator, uh, to enter into negotiations with the current vendor, uh, that's providing curbside collection services for Area Three.
Second.
Moving proper, second, discussion. There being none, Ms. Owen can call the roll for the motion that was made by Mr. Walker and second by.
One clarification, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Attorney, would, you have any opinion on it? Is that a valid motion from a procurement perspective? Is that appropriate?
Well, I think that if council chooses to, they've reviewed the information, they just can't add any information that's been given post-procurement. So if, if they're, if they're basing the decision on the information that was received by procurement, uh, then they can do it.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I can add a little clarity, this is the administrator.
Right, yes.
Mr. Walker, just so you know, in our contracts, it does say that there are different options that county council can take based off what they deem, and so, uh, renewal, renegotiation, those items are listed as options, and I think that might also speak to the question that you're asking.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item, um, nineteen C and D are resolutions. C is a resolution to appoint and commission Bill Davis, um, Glimmy, um, is it Haynes, um, and Zan Norris as code enforcement officers for the, um, proper security and general welfare in convenience of Richland County. And nineteen D, a resolution to approve the issuance of, well, let me keep those separate, um, let me entertain, let me entertain the motion for item nineteen C.
Second.
Mackey.
Moving proper second, um.
Mr. Chair, yeah, Mr. Chair, just want to get some clarity, uh, nineteen, uh, C, am I sorry, E, is that?
Turn the page, there's one more resolution, Mr. Chair.
So, well, with respect to nineteen D, the resolution to approve, uh, the issuance of a revenue bond for Brookfield Point, I would move to defer that matter.
But we're on C, that's.
My motion is just for C.
I'm sorry?
We, we deal with, we deal with nineteen C right now.
Okay, I'm just making sure, I thought I heard.
You recognize, Ms. McBride?
Mr. Chair, are these code enforcement officers with the sheriff's office or with DS, with, um, county?
These are utility employees, and by making them code enforcement officers, it gives them then the authority, uh, to, uh, address county ordinances uh, that are being violated. So these are utility employees.
Oh, are they under the sheriff's?
No, ma'am, they're under the county administration.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, okay.
Can you, if I will, then, Ms.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to go back to nineteen B and move for reconsideration so the administrator and his staff can move forward with whatever they need to do.
Malinowski move is proper second by Mack and Walker, I think it was, um, it is, uh, that's a reconsideration, Ms. Owen, call the roll for motion reconsideration.
Malinowski.
Yeah.
Pugh.
Oh.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Tratio.
No.
Joe Walker.
No.
Baron.
No.
Overture Walker. Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton. No, motion fails.
That brings us to item nineteen D, resolution, um, to approve the issuance of revenue bonds for Brookfield Point, um, by, um, the Columbia Housing Authority. Mr. Brown, want to speak to that one?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I believe this is just a request that came in, uh, and I believe in terms of the, the process, uh, I think it's a ministerial process, but that requires the county's, uh, approval of that process, uh, but that is, uh, all of the information that I have from the administrative standpoint, Mr. Chair.
I remember correctly, we've, we've done these in the past, and it, it doesn't affect, um, the county bond or anything that to, that to, is that, that is correct, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, that, that, that is my understanding.
So this is for, um, housing, apartment buildings or housing? Is this what this resolution is about?
So, yes, ma'am, Ms. McBride, so, uh, my understanding is that this, uh, process comes through county council, um, but it, but it, it does not involve, um, uh, put at risk the county, but that, as a, that we are an entity that this has to pass through in order for the housing authority to be able to use, uh, and address housing.
Oh, if we did not approve this, then the housing authority would not be able to do what they wanted to do? Is that what you're saying, or this is just a formality?
They, they're required, they're required to go through a local government to do it, they can't do it themselves, so, yeah, but if you don't, if you don't approve it, they can't do it.
And, um, where is Brookfield Point? Where is that located? What district?
District Eight, um.
It's in District Eight? Okay. I'm assuming that District Eight is familiar with it. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? I get a motion on, um, nineteen D?
Uh, Mr. Chair, at this, I would like to move to defer this matter since this is going to impact my district, uh, I would like to have a little more information, so.
So, uh, I, I was told, but that this is time sensitive in terms of period of the grant or whatever, did you, were you told anything about?
No, sir, I was not told.
In the point this.
I was not told directly, Mr. Chair. I had to maybe go back and look at some emails, but I was not told directly that this was a time-sensitive matter. Um, but I, I cannot say that definitively without going back and trying to see maybe an, an email that this came through, Mr. Chair. But no one had conversations with me regarding time sensitivity of this matter.
Mr. Brown, it looks like you guys might want to speak to this over there in the corner, just so you know.
Okay, perfect, uh, if, Mr. Chair, if you will recognize ACA Jensen, uh, to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Eric Jensen, Assistant County Administrator, for the record. Very simply, this is a, a, a ministerial function of the county, eh, this is a function of the IRS code. The, uh, housing authority wishes or desires to issue tax-exempt bonds to help fund these two projects that you will be hearing. There is no, uh, liability or obligation on Bahari County. The reason the county has a role in this process, and I've been told this by numerous bond councils over the year, because every jurisdiction I have worked for has had this responsibility, because again, it is an aspect of federal tax code. Essentially, it is to, uh, add transparency to the process because the taxing or the housing authority is not a local government agency such as this, and so they want them to hold public hearings and they want to make sure that their actions take place in a public, um, environment. And so they want to make sure that the public is aware that this is happening, and that the uh purpose of the tax-exempt bonds is a legitimate uh purpose under the IRS tax code. So that is essentially what the council is asked to do, is to pass a resolution stating that the purpose of the and the use of the tax-exempt bonds is a legitimate um use under the IRS tax code. So that is what is being asked of the council tonight. And yes, it is time-sensitive. They uh they asked that we put them on this agenda and not wait until uh the council hears the item again in February, because it would delay issuance of the tax bonds, tax-exempt bonds.
Thank you very much. There's the motion.
Back, on the floor, and it was seconded by Councilman Joe Walker.
That was the, that was the front, I was asking for clarification. Um.
May may I ask a question?
Can you, uh, will will you have enough time if you defer it out to Thursday, so we won't have to worry about them not meeting the deadline? I don't know what you need to put in that information. Oh, the referral is 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 for Thursday, and and again, if you don't have what you need, just just defer it again.
Uh, I guess, Mr. Chair, for me, uh, this is a unit that's going to go up in my district. Uh, it's going on, I believe it's seven acres, uh ninety-five units, and it's almost like it's, and I know we're saying that this is, you know, there's a public hearing or what have you, I think the public hearing was done telephonically, based on what I read in the materials, but no one has reached out to me, I've not heard from the Columbia Housing Authority, and and that's, I'm not, I'm casting aspersions on them. Uh, but this is a pretty big project that's going up in my district, and my constituents know nothing about it, at least until tonight. Uh, but so I understand time is of the essence, but it just would have been, um, and it would have been, uh, at least it could have had the courtesy of knowing well before, you know, this week, uh, that something like this was coming into my district. And again, I'm not not upset about it, but it's just, you know, to be told that, you know, time is of the essence, and this has to be done, but yet I've not heard from anyone at all. Uh, you know, so, but in any event, if we need to defer it only until for forty-eight hours, uh, that's what we would do, but certainly, uh, yeah, I'm not uh ecstatic about that.
I do see, well, that was just. All the roll for the motion for the referral.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh. McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Tratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron. Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Bring us. Revolution. Approve the issue of new bonds for Andrews Cross scene by the Columbia Housing Authority.
Chair. I need to make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Proper second, and here's the discussion. Not, um, Miss Hung can call the roll for the motion to to uh to approve.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Tratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I bring us item nineteen on your agenda, which is executive session, we had two items, opioid.
Mr. Chair. Um, I move to reconsider that item.
Oh, so reconsidered, um nineteen C.
Second.
I'm E, I'm sorry, and properly moved by Mr. Raceo, second by Mr. Walker, um.
By Newton?
Only can. Take the motion.
I I thought Newton did, but now I'm confused.
I'm sorry, thank Newton.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Say your name and then make your motion. That'd be helpful.
Motion.
Well, I don't, I know your name, but I don't, I don't, I don't know your voice through the glass. All right, Miss, Miss Ellen, can you?
Yes, look, Malinowski.
No.
Pugh.
You, no.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio. Oh. Joe Walker.
Uh.
Baron.
No.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton. No. Motion fails.
I bring us to, um, item, um, nineteen, well, twenty now on your agenda, that is executive session. And we had two items for executive session, one on through opioid litigation, and other, reference administrators uh agreement. Um, chartered motion going executive session for a short, for a short.
Second. Baron.
Downstairs.
Moved by Baron.
Mackey.
Mackey, second by Baron.
Baron.
Misses Ellen, call the roll for the motion.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Walker, no.
Baron.
No. I mean, yeah, sorry.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Yes. Motion passes.
There he is. Let's go stand up.
Ms. Hung, did you get that motion in second?
I sure did.
To come out of executive session, thank you very much, um, can you call for the vote?
Yes, sir. Melonowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Much, uh, we had discussed two items in executive session, which, one, the first one was opioid litigation, um.
Chair? It's Mackey. Um, yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the county attorney to agree to participate, um, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Make the motions. Was it second?
Second, Walker, Joseph, third.
Ms. Hung, can you call the role for the motion, I think we got person set on that one.
Yes, sir. Melonowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Bring us to, um, uh, the second item discussion, executive session reference, administrative agreement.
Chair?
Mr. Walker, oh, Walker.
Joe Walker.
Jay Walker, recognize?
I move to authorize the chair to present and execute an extension with the county administrator with the terms as discussed in executive session.
Second by Baron. Melonowski?
Yeah.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Move for reconsideration for both items.
Second. Newton?
Second reconsider, item, uh, executive item.
Melonowski?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Oh.
Tratio?
No.
Joe Walker?
Aye.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Ms. Hung, was there anything for the motion period? I don't have anything.
No, sir, I didn't receive any motion.
Second, Walker, Joseph.
Actually, I was adjourned, it's, it's movement and second, um, to adjourn by half council. Um, and second, um, Ms. Hung, can you call the role for the motion to adjourn?
Melonowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for getting this out.
Y'all are special.